You know, I had that happen to me once and they wouldn't let me on the flight. I stood there and watched my bag get up. They held the plane for my bag to get on. I was in Charleston, South Carolina and was stuck without my bag for the next day. I was furious. Okay. Alright, great. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Thanks to Troop Ten and I would invite the scouts from Troop Ten to please come forward and introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about their scouting journey. Welcome, fellas. You got the mic right there in front of you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Isaac Hugh. I'm in seventh grade and I go to Overland Trail Middle School and I'm currently working on Scout Rank.
Great. Welcome, Isaac. You did a great job.
My name is Connor Miller. I am a junior at Blue Valley North and I am an Eagle Scout.
Connor, we're glad you're here tonight.
Hello, I am Watson Dressy. I go to Blue Valley North. I am a freshman and I am working on first class.
Welcome. Well, yes, sir.
I wanted to thank you for going to the Eagle Scout Court of Honor yesterday.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, Troop Ten had an Eagle Scout Court of Honor, gosh, I guess it was just yesterday. It seems like a week ago now. But it was just yesterday where they welcomed seven new Eagle Scouts. As you know, earlier in the year, we celebrated their 75th anniversary and they all hold a very special place in my heart because I served as Scout Master for that troop for three years. So, thanks to Troop Ten and thanks to the scouts this evening. We appreciate it. With that, I would ask staff if they have any revisions or amendments to the agenda as it was published last week.
We do not.
If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as published? Thank you, Dr. Castor. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as it was published last week, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the agenda is unanimously approved. I don't have any citizens who signed in this evening to provide comments for the good of the city or for the good of the governing body. So we'll move on to proclamations and I have just one proclamation this evening. It's proclamation relates to a very important service organization for the city of Leewood and some of the amazing work that they have done over the years and continue to do today. So with that, I'll note that whereas Rotary International launched Plus Polio in 1985 and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas Rotary is a global network consisting of over 1.2 million members and more than 45,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographical areas. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988 and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And to date, Rotary has contributed more than $2.9 billion and countless volunteer hours to protecting nearly 3 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which will be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And these efforts provide much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas there are 4,000 Rotary Club members and more than 105 clubs in District Number 5710 throughout northern Kansas, sponsoring service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy in the environment in their local communities and abroad. And whereas local Rotarians have committed their time, talent, and treasure to continue support of Polio Plus until polio is finally eradicated from the earth. Now therefore, I, Mark E. Elkins, Mayor of the City of Leewood, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 24, 2025, as World Polio Day in Leewood, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to participate in this observance. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Leewood to be affixed this 20th day of October, 2025. And with that, I believe that there are a number of Rotarians here this evening. We have a number of Rotarians on the dais as well as at the staff seats. I think the local club president, Mr. Rod Pemberton, is here. Rod, do you have some comments that you'd like to make to the governing body in connection with this important day?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just briefly. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Elkins, the members of the Leewood City Council. On behalf of the Rotary Club of Leewood, it is an honor to accept the proclamation recognizing World Polio Day. Rotary's fight to end polio began in 1985, as you said. And thanks to partnerships and the organizations, the World Health Organization, the Gates Foundation, the governments around the world, we've reduced polio cases by more than 99%. Only a few cases remain in two countries, India and Pakistan. So Rotary is committed to seeing the end through this terrible disease. We appreciate the City of Leewood for joining us in raising awareness and keeping this goal in sight. Together, we are showing that even from our little, small corner of Kansas, we can help make a difference in the world. Healthier, safer, place for every child. Thank you again for continued support of Rotary's mission, service above self. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pemberton. We appreciate your comment. And with that, I would invite the Rotarians on the dais as well as Rotarians at the desks to join me up front as we present this proclamation. Thank you. I don't believe we have any presentations or recognitions this evening. And we come then to special business, which is relates to the referral of flooding issues located along Indian Creek, including immediately north of I-435 in Leewood Estates to the Stormwater Management Committee. And with that, David Lay, I believe that you have some comments for us to help set the stage. For those of you who may recall during the hearings, pardon me, at our last meeting, it came to our attention as we considered the Brookwood North or the North Hallbrook Project, that there were some pretty significant flooding issues just north of 435 and we wanted to bring those to the fore today. So, Mr. Lay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, yeah, this is a request to the Stormwater Committee and if we can bring up my map onto the screen, thank you. So there are, what I would like to do and what I'm proposing is to hire Olson and Associates, who has the most recent floodplain model of this watershed. You know, it's going to be what FEMA updates their floodplain levels to be. So they're really the best ones to utilize in this project. On this map, I identified, I believe, there are seven different projects of known flooding issues that we have. So if you look on the far right end, we have, there's State Line Road and that floods by approximately five feet in a hundred-year storm event. So that, it's flooding every two to three years at this point and it's flooding for several hours. And so it's really pushing traffic over to Roe or to Warnell, really impacting emergency vehicle access. So we need to get that addressed. In the orange are the properties that are in the floodplain. And so this would be a couple of different projects because we have this commercial area, which is where the gates is at. So that area floods also. It's in the hundred-year floodplain. And then a little bit to the south, there's some residential properties that are protected by a levee, but it's not a FEMA-approved levee. So they do have some issues with some flooding because once the flap gate's closed on that levee, water can't get out. So water gets trapped on that other side. If you look further south, we have kind of just a minor issue, but if we're looking at all the flooding issues along this creek, I'd like to also include the park fields in this area. They flood frequently and it's a challenge for parks to be able to utilize that area. As we mentioned, on the north side of 435 in this magenta-colored, this is from a 2017 stormwater questionnaire that we sent out on requesting if people had flooded and get some input from them. And they, these are, there's probably about 12 properties on the north side here that flood. And that's occurring, as was described, as once Indian Creek starts rising, it actually pushes underneath 435 and floods this area. So it's really water going underneath 435. And then to the south there, we have Lee Boulevard and that's flooding annually. We'd like to get that looked at. And then Mission Road floods probably about every five years and cuts, again, another route north and south off. And so the thought is that we'd hire a consultant to look at like a 50,000 level here, very high level, but come up with some solutions and some costs. So you can all have that information and decide whether or not we want to go forward. Because one project's not going to solve all this. This will probably be six or seven different projects.
And, Mr. Lay, to the point you just made, it's my understanding that there are multiple causes for these areas of flooding that we find and there's not a single cause to address, but there are multiple causes to be considered in trying to find the right way to approach and protect these properties, correct?
That's correct.
Questions for Mr. Lay?
Just going to make a comment?
Certainly.
I just want to acknowledge that the county has started looking at a bigger picture of watersheds and we certainly have been a partnership in taking that bigger picture. So I just really want to applaud pulling these all together to look at them so we're not playing whack-a-mole and moving water around to the next problem. So thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Ms. Philip. Other questions or comments? Ms. Kane?
Do we know when this might be heard and then how will the residents?
So the schedule at this point, we'll need to look at it to see if we can do a November meeting. We already have October's kind of settled with looking at the Leewood South flooding issues. And so maybe it'd either be November or January to start discussion on this and then we bring a contract forward with Olson and Associates to you all for approval early, maybe January or February.
And with this initial meeting, will you be speaking about all the areas that were referred to on your map? You're not going to, you said it was eight or nine projects. You're not going to subdivide them for the initial meeting, or are you?
So I think on the initial meeting, I'd like to go over with the Stormwater Committee all the issues that we have so they're aware. It's not just the residential areas in certain portions. It's quite a few areas that need to be addressed.
Great. Thank you.
And I believe that, pardon me, Ms. Philip is the chairman of that committee right now, I believe.
If you get it in there quick.
Good. Well, in November, you'll still be here. So, alright. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Lay? If not, do I hear a motion to refer the issue of, pardon me, these various areas of flooding north of I-435 and Leewood Estates and other surrounding areas to the Stormwater Committee for consideration with the idea that they will ultimately come to us with a recommendation as to how to proceed?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Philip. Any discussion? All those in favor of referring the flooding issues that were described by Mr. Lay to the Stormwater Management Committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the matter is unanimously referred to the Stormwater Management Committee. We'll be looking forward to the results of their discussions and the recommendations as to how to proceed. Thank you, Mr. Lay. We appreciate your help on this. Pardon me. Come now to the consent agenda this evening. There are a number of items on the consent agenda. Are there items that individual governing body members would like to pull from the consent agenda for additional questions of staff or discussion? Ms. Kane?
Item C is in Kane, haha, and E is in Edward.
C and E?
Please.
Thank you. Others? If not, do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of items C and E? Thank you, Ms. Philip. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exceptions of items C and E, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and the consent agenda with the exception of items C and E are unanimously, is unanimously approved. I'll call item C first, which is a resolution calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing on the advisability of creating a transportation development district in the city of Leewood, Kansas, to be known as the East Village Transportation Development District and regarding the city's intent to consider the levy of a transportation development district sales tax with such district. Ms. Kane?
Yes, thank you. So I understand item 8C tonight is a resolution merely scheduling the public hearing and it does not approve the petition. But I have a few questions that I hope can be clarified about the, just the process that's in place. I'm assuming you're all receiving all the emails on this matter, so I'm glad that the word is getting out to the public because this is important to consider. But I'm also getting questions about the procedure. So if somebody can explain not only to this body, but the audience and anybody listening online, I would appreciate. What are the steps and how is this going to proceed, please?
Ms. Stoddard?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Kevin Wimpy, the city's bond council, is present on Zoom this evening. And I think I would ask if Kevin can go through the process for you?
Thank you.
And then particularly the, what you're being asked to do this evening related to this particular petition. Thank you.
I don't see Mr. Wimpy on my monitor. Kevin, are you on this evening?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Counsel, can everyone hear me okay?
Great, thank you. Welcome. If you could state your name and address and your role for us so the record's clear, we'd be grateful.
Sure thing, Mayor. Yeah, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell. We represent the city as the city's bond council located at 2405 Grand Boulevard. As to the question on procedure, much like some other recent discussions we've had, taking up consideration of a transportation development district sales tax involves first calling a public hearing by adopting a resolution that's before you tonight. And should you choose to proceed, the clerk's office and our staff would coordinate to provide the notices required by statute, which include mailing notice to the property owners of the public hearing occurring at your November 17th meeting. And there'd also be publications in the paper providing notice to the public as well. At your November 17th meeting, there would be a public hearing and at that meeting, there'd be an ordinance for your consideration that would establish the district and impose that 1% requested TDD sales tax. Alongside that, we'd anticipate having a development agreement stating the terms, the incentives, and construction of the projects and so forth for your consideration as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wimpy. Ms. Kane?
Yes, thank you. So part of, we just went through a Leewood strategic plan effort and one of our pillars is transparency and further enhancing our communication to our residents and our businesses actually across the board. So I'm really pleased that the word is getting out already and we're, a flood of emails not to, you know, I hate to say the word flood right now after we just talked about Port Tomahawk Creek Parkway. So whatever the word should be, I'll defer to that. But one of the emails I request or received tonight was asking, or hoping that, it was to me, well, to me and my other co-coord four councilmen, but asking me to deny this resolution tonight, which merely schedules the public hearing. So it's my understanding, or it was my understanding, that we couldn't deny the resolution to just merely schedule the public hearing. But I can be wrong and I could be wrong again tonight. And then conversely, I'm not so sure, in my opinion, we want to deny the public hearing because by definition, a public hearing is giving the public an opportunity to be heard, right? Which again, is one of our pillars. We're already receiving emails. We absolutely want to hear from our constituents, right? So again, even with all due respect, Mr. Wimpy, I'm still not sure, do we have that power? And even if we have that power tonight, is it state statute? Is it not state statute? If we deny it, does that deny the TDD request? Or how does this work? I'm sorry, I still not crystal clear and then I'm trying to respond to the emails that I've been receiving, please.
Well, sure, council member, yeah. Like any other incentive, it's at the discretion of the governing body whether to approve or deny. And that goes for tonight's resolution as well. It's at your discretion whether to vote yes or no and continue the proceeding. And same goes for November 17th. You obviously retain that discretion through the final vote on this item as well.
So, Mr. Wimpy, just to clarify, you're telling us that the statute does not require a public hearing, correct?
Correct. So the statute requires adoption of a resolution to set the public hearing as the first procedural step and that's subject to this body's vote tonight.
So again, I'm not quite sure that's responsive. Does the statute require that we hold a hearing?
No.
But does that, Mr. Wimpy, does that, again, okay, I understand if it doesn't require the public hearing, it doesn't require the public hearing. But does that indeed stop us from hearing the request for the TDD? I mean, is it one in the same? Is it one action? If we deny the public hearing tonight, are we denying hearing the TDD proposal that's been put forth?
It would deny setting a public hearing on the proposal in front of you? I suppose nothing would foreclose the possibility you'd receive a subsequent petition and be put in a similar position to either schedule a public hearing by resolution or not.
Okay, so whether or not we hear the public, which again, I'll say aloud and my co-counsel can weigh in, but I'm all about hearing what the public have to say. So no matter what happens tonight, November 17th at 7:00 PM, what we may or may not authorize tonight is that's when the public hearing will be opened or not, depending upon what we decide. And then right afterwards, we'll be asked to perhaps make a decision on the proposal as it stands. So we could eliminate the public hearing, but where, does it mean we're eliminating tonight if we don't hear it? The proposal before us, or the TDD proposal being suggested?
Can I word that a different?
Let's have Mr. Wimpy respond to that question.
Sorry, I hope I'm not talking in circles. I just, like I said, I just want to make sure we're understanding the process. Because this doesn't come up often. We've only had two TDDs ever in the city of Leewood. So I want to make sure we're all understanding the process.
Right, council member. And I apologize, I'm not sure I grasp the specific question. If you wouldn't mind restating or clarifying, I'm not sure I grasp the latest question.
Okay, I'm sorry if I'm, maybe somebody else wants to help, but Mike?
Julie.
Alan.
Deborah.
I think you're asking, are we obligated to hear this petition? Is that what you're asking? Are we obligated to even consider it?
Well, tonight, we're being asked to schedule the public hearing. So that's what the question on the floor is tonight. But then I want to know what it triggers. If we deny the public hearing, what does that trigger? Does that trigger, they're still allowed to bring the TDD forward? Does that say that, no, that stops the TDD proposal? I just need to know what action A generates with action B and C.
Mr. Wimpy?
Sure. So if you should approve this resolution tonight, it would schedule a public hearing on your November 17th meeting on the TDD proposal. Should you vote no tonight, there would be no public hearing scheduled. As to future considerations about the projects, I don't think any, nothing about your vote tonight would foreclose the possibility that a similar request or a different request, for instance, would arise. And of course, that would go through staff and be formulated for your consideration if and when appropriate.
So what I'm hearing, or I'll paraphrase what I think I'm hearing, you can tell me if this is correct, Mr. Wimpy, is that if we would vote as a body against the resolution that's here tonight, the recourse that the applicant would have would be to file a new petition for a TDD and we'd be going through this whole exercise again?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer, Ms. Kane?
So an application does require a public hearing?
Every time they file an application, it does, at some point in time.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Philip, did you have anything else? Ms. Harrison, you look like you had a question or a comment.
A question for Mr. Wimpy. So I understand this is for, the proposed filing is for a 1% sales tax for 22 years. Can we, would this happen tonight or at step two, the November meeting? If we were to say, a little bargaining here, maybe not 1% for 22 years, but half a percent for 10 years? Is that ever a part of the equation or options?
Yes, council member. So the, as always with incentives, it's at your discretion to grant some, all, or none of the requested incentive. So if there was any negotiation, we would take that input from you tonight and it'd be coordinated with staff and the developer between now and the public hearing. And should we arrive at something that developer and staff were on board with, it would arrive at your council packet for the 17th.
Thank you.
I guess from the chair, I would suggest that, I don't know that either the applicant or we are prepared to consider the merits of the proposal or the petition tonight. My suggestion would be that it would be at, frankly, following, immediately following that public hearing when we would have that conversation on the merits. But that would be my proposal for how to proceed procedurally tonight.
That I understand, but...
Any other questions for Mr. Wimpy or comments regarding the resolution calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing on a TDD for East Village? If not, do I hear a motion for one way or the other with respect to this resolution? Mr. Sunkel?
Move to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Sipple.
It's to approve it on the, a public hearing.
To approve it, this resolution?
Right, the resolution for the public hearing, yes.
So there is a motion, there is a second. Mr. Sunkel and Mr. Sipple, is there additional discussion concerning the setting of giving of notice and setting of a hearing for the consideration of a transportation development district and associated tax in connection with East Village?
Question?
Yes.
Well, the information about the background on this, because it feels awkward that we're doing this after you've already approved the East and West Village.
No, East only.
East. And so this is part of that, or is this bigger than? East. And so, this is part of that, or is this bigger than East?
This relates to the East Village project.
So, I guess my question is, is this typical for it to show up after, as a request for incentive, after the project's already been approved?
I know that in at least one instance that has happened, and that is with respect to the Regency Park that's across the street, across, on the other side of 435. That's the way the governing body handled it before I became mayor.
Across 135th.
I said, across 135th.
Because of the undergrounding?
Uh, no, I don't believe it was undergrounding. I believe it had to do with the infrastructure for underground parking. Ms. Harrison?
To clarify, our notes here say the city has approved two other sales tax TDDs, Park Place and Town Center Crossing. Is the Regency Park a third that is not mentioned in this packet? Or was that a different kind of incentive?
Maybe I was in error, Ms. Stotter.
I just want to clarify.
No, it's a good point.
I might see if Patty might be able to help me with that, but I don't believe that it was a TDD, because the TDD relates to sales tax.
There's a construction cost?
Yeah, I know, I believe that there was, and, is there an industrial revenue bond on that? Do you-
There is.
So, I stand corrected, my apologies, I was in error.
Yes, but you are correct, Mayor. For years, the city actually would not consider a request for incentives prior to preliminary plan or final plan.
Approval, right?
Right. I mean, you had to get through all the planning process before you could ask.
All right. So, I had the wrong particulars, but the right general idea. My apologies, to anybody. Mr. Sippel, a question for Ms. Bennett. If I'm not mistaken, there was a TDD associated with a property on the southeast corner of Row and 135th. Wasn't there a TDD associated with that?
Yes, there was a TDD, but that was not sales tax. That was special assessment TDD. We had a couple of them along 135th Street.
Okay. So, it's the funding source that causes this one to be different?
The sales tax, yes, or the, is a little different, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Other questions or discussion concerning the pending motion? If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing on the advisability of creating a transportation development district in the city of Leewood to be known as the East Village Transportation Development District, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
That would be Dr. Castor and Ms. Harrison voting nay, the rest voting aye. The motion carries on a four to two vote, and the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item E, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a right-of-way maintenance agreement between the city and the Hazelwood Homeowners Association. Ms. Kane, I believe this was yours as well?
Yes, this is just a shout out to a new program that we instituted back in March, or back a while ago, where we now have a neighborhood license plate reader program, and we have the second HOA that has partnered with us. Hallbrook was the first, and now Hazelwood Homeowners Association will be the second. So, it's just a shout out to Mr. Robbins, our police chief, and this, I think it's going to be great, and a great asset, and then they're figuring out how best to do it, so to simplify everybody being able to read one another. So, shout out to our police department and this new program within our city. And with that, I move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Discussion, Ms. Harrison?
Quick question for the chief. Is this a gated community already? Do I understand that to be the case? I think I know the answer to that, but I just want to double check.
No, Hazelwood is the non-gated community at a north side of 119th and Pony.
There's a gated community behind it?
Yes, there is.
Further through, okay. It seemed odd to me that a gated community would also have a need for this, kind of, I thought that was a double. But, do you anticipate seeing more of these come through the pipeline with neighborhoods working?
We have one other neighborhood that has spoken to us a couple of times, made some inquiries, but they haven't asked for any kind of agreement yet.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Other comments, Mr. Sippel? Another question for the chief, has, having these available to us, has that enabled you to solve any property crimes in those neighborhoods?
Right now, we only have one up in Hallbrook, and it has provided leads for us. I don't know specifically that it has solved a crime, but it has definitely helped to identify some suspect vehicles.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Other questions for the chief? Other additional comment from the governing body? If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution approving and authorizing me to execute a, pardon me, right-of-way maintenance agreement between the city and Hazelwood Homers Association, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted. And just asking the clerk, did I announce the vote incorrectly with respect to item C? It was a four, did I call it as a four to two vote?
It is four to two.
Okay. So, just to clarify the record, then, that resolution, item C, was adopted on a four to two vote. I was afraid that I said six to two, but one way or the other, we have it correctly, correct now. We come now to the mayor's report. I have two items this evening. First, a week ago today, the city was privileged to host an investors' conference for federal realty, which is the new owner of Town Center Plaza and Town Center Crossing. They had invited a number of their institutional investors, as well as Wall Street analysts who consider recommendations to investors as to whether to invest in the real that is federal realty. We hosted them here in the council chambers. My gratitude to Mr. Powell and Stacy for the work that they did in short notice of reconfiguring the governing body's chambers to host this event. I had an opportunity to address the group, as did Mr. Powell. Mr. Powell did an excellent job in talking about the city and our interest and the importance of Town Center and Town Center Crossing to the city of Leewood. All indications are that the investors' conference went well, and that the investors, many of whom came from New York, came away with a new appreciation for the economic development opportunities that there are here in the city of Leewood, and the nature of Leewood is a good place for them to recommend to their clients that they invest their money in federal realty. So, that was a, we really enjoyed that opportunity to speak with them. And then, on a bit more mundane, but a lot more fun issue, on Friday, the other of the city's major service organizations, Alliance Club, hosted a pancake feed for the, for Leewood on Friday afternoon and Saturday morning. It was my pleasure to authorize the city to advance the costs of our city employees of enjoying pancakes and sausages, and I'm sure that they took advantage of that. But again, just as we appreciate the great work that the Rotary Club does, we similarly appreciate the great work that the Lions Club does. That completes my report. Questions for me? If not, we move to item 10, which is the council members' report. And with that, we have before us this evening a report from council members Kane and Harrison, who are serving on the executive committee that we've created to help lead the efforts by the city of Leewood to celebrate and enjoy the spectacle that will be the World Cup hosted by the Kansas City Metropolitan Area in 2026, just a few short months away. With that, I would recognize Ms. Kane to bring us up to date, please.
All righty. Are we going to have a presentation on this, this part of it? No. Okay, so, in your packets, you were given an update. We met last August, and if you'll recall, president of the Board of, or Chamber of Commerce, rather, Stephanie Meyer is in the audience, as is Matt Peppas, who's a member of the overall FIFA committee. I don't recall exactly what number that is, but we've been meeting since January. And then, the mayor, in his infinite wisdom, selected four of us to spearhead it and kind of subdivide the different activities. And on that executive committee is Councilwoman Harrison and I, and Stephen Powell, Assistant City Administrator, as is Stephanie Meyer, who's, again, the Leewood Chamber CEO. I called you president, I guess. Did I demote you? I demoted you? Sorry, didn't know, didn't know. All right, anyway, so as you can read, and I won't read it to you, we're super excited about this. We have not officially kicked off, but we certainly are well underway. But you, I gave you all an example of our brand-new shiny letterhead as developed by our communications department. Thank you for making us look so good. And you can see that, again, we take our nod to our statue in the park, the For the Goal statue in City Park, and from this, Beth Rittenstein, who is awesome, and Sam and her group, develop the shield that will appear on our jerseys. And we have all sorts of pins coming that will match the For the Goal, and we have our bling that we, starting to make some presentations. Lisa and I did the first one, the first official in-person one last week. But I'll just run through this really quick. The launch part of this will happen comprehensively. Many of our strategic plans include communication, wider communication, and broader communication. So, when we officially launch, we'll be reaching out to all of our citizens, all of our HOAs, all of our businesses, all of our places of worship, or this is our plan, and all of our, all of our everything, basically, whatever I left out, our schools, that's the other one. So, all are welcome. We are all on the same team. We're uber excited to be playing, and it's working, right, Lisa? It's working. So, the Launch and Branding Committee, again, is myself and Stephen and Beth, who I, who is, I can't say enough about Beth and Sam right now. Another super component of this will be the Small Business Grant, and Matt Peppas is leading that charge, and Alan Sunkel is on that as well. And what we've done is, with the different parts of the FIFA, we, I went to every one of our council people, because being a council person is very hard sometimes. So, we decided we all get to play on this fun team, if you will. So, I went to everybody, and I said, okay, what floats your boat? What committee do you want to be on? And then, conversely, Mr. Powell signed at least a staff member to piggyback. So, on the Small Business Grant is Matt Peppas in the audience, as well as Alan, but also one of our, one of our staff members. So, that's super cool, and you can read about that. The grant program will be launching pretty quickly, because then we'll get the submissions, and then they will be hard at, hard at work to make the decisions and bring them to us on January of 2026. So, yay, Matt, for coming up with that stellar idea, and thank you for serving on that committee. The next one is, we're going to have a citywide cleanup event. We always do it every year, anyway. We pick up the trails. But as I was doing my steps one day, I was noticing, in my opinion, way too much trash here and there blowing around. So, we will be launching a citywide event where we're picking up our parks, we're picking up our streets, we're picking up our HOAs, and, again, so that's, we're getting ready for the party, if you will. And so, you know, if you're having a big party at your house, you get ready. And what do you, how do you get ready? You clean up. So, that's going to be great. So, thank you to Stephen and Lisa Harrison, and then Chuck Sippel, who's going to be all leading that charge with the Rotary. So, we're ever so grateful. The next one on the agenda, this is in no specific order, the cleanup event will be May-June before this all comes to fruition. The next one on the agenda with the dates of June 13-14 is the three-on-three soccer tournament. We have two people that are on the main, the main committee, Chris Reed with Alloy Fitness, and then Michael Hyatt with, help me? Thank you, Steel City, thank you. Steel City Media, they're on the big committee. They are taking this on and doing a great job, working in conjunction with Chris Claxton and Marissa on that committee, as well as Dan Mahanki and the groundskeepers, if you will, because this will be held in City Park on our own field. So, the fun part is, right, Lisa? We put on our dog and pony show last week, Thursday, was it? I'm getting my dates mixed up, doesn't matter. But we did our, we put on our dog and pony show. We looked really good, thanks to Beth, and we had all of our bling. And darn it, if we didn't get a $10,000, the top-level, top-tier sponsorship for the three-on-three in our very first meeting. So, rub our heads if we can keep on going, you know, who knows what we're going to be able to do. And then, I also, we have Sporting Kansas City, we have at least three players that want to play with us, especially with the three-on-three. But I contacted Kansas City Current last week, and they have committed, drum roll, they've committed to playing on the Leewood team. They're calling it, don't you love this? They're calling it our hometown team. Don't you love that? And then, you know, this is such a big undertaking in the city, and to give our businesses and our citizens and our Leewood, whatever, whoever, you fill in the blank, an opportunity to play in the hometown team is really resonating, right? You're either bigger fish in a smaller pond, or conversely. So, it's, we were so proud of ourselves. Lisa did a stellar job, fun, funny to be in a meeting with and presenting something like this, and darn it if it didn't work. So, Kansas City Current has committed to coming to both of our watch parties, as well as our three-on-three, and bringing these experiential pop-up events. So, it'll, we're not sure what it's going to be, if it's, whatever it is, it's branded to the Kansas City Current. They're coming in spades, and they're coming to three, count them, three of our events. I told them that we have the men represented and the boys represented, but we're not about to get started without having the women represented and the little girls, because they are playing soccer, too. So, apparently, my, our messaging and our direction is what I was told by Kansas City Current. They like our messaging, they like our direction. And then, we're coming out of the gate early, yay. So, if you, we're learning, aren't we, Mayor? You ask first, you get stuff. So, we're going to keep on moving forward. There will be a watch party on June 20th at Park Place. Right now is the plan, July 19th, as it stands. None of this is in ink yet. This is all in conceptual, but pretty hardcore conceptual. We'll have watch parties in both Park Place and then Town Center, Town Center proper by federal, that was part of the conversation last week. Again, we want everybody involved, if you're on the council, if you're on one of our subcommittees. We're all on the same team, and that is Team Leewood. So, we'll be working with the different Geser Committee to clean up Geser, Elon Committee to clean up Elon, you name it. Everybody's going to be asked, at least, and if they join the party, they join the party. If they don't, they don't. But Arts Project has really some fun things, too. We did order the pins, the pins are in order. Remember, we had this little Run Red Run pin. So, now we've got the pins that look like our For the Goal coming, and all sorts of fun ideas about signage and crosswalk art and prints, and anyway, all those things are in development. We still don't know what our transportation arm is going to cost us, that's a TBD. We still don't know what viewing rights is going to cost us, so that's a stay tuned. But in conjunction with this, we also are trying, I'm trying my hardest to try to pull this off, a play local coupon book that may be across the city of Leewood and the chamber. If you, whatever your business is, and if you want to be part of the coupon book, then yay, come and play with us and be in our, whether you're Tide Cleaners, or you're the coffee shop, or you're the hen house, we don't care who you are, if you want to play, you know, get in the coupon book. Don't quite know how I'm going to pull that off yet, but that's a big one on my list, anyway. And then, it won't be soccer-centric. It will be honoring our 250th, whatever that word is, the 250th anniversary. But we will have a parade on the morning of July 4th, as well as a good old-fashioned American 4th of July with the fireworks and everything else. So, yay, Lisa Harrison is leading up both those charges, and do you want to speak to that at all?
Well, I will say that we want you to help us spread the word about the need for involvement, really, across the board on all of these. So, I see a couple of students in the room. I see people from different parts of town. I see small business owners in the room. Please go back and tell your people. We need Leewood City staff to be volunteering. We need students who need community service hours to be volunteering and participating in the parade and things like that. So, we'll be reaching out to schools to get bands. This is going to be, as the- So we'll be reaching out to schools to get bands, this is going to be, as the mayor suggested, an old-fashioned Midwest Fourth of July parade, it's going to be great. We've had parades in Leewood before, so we know how to do this, but it's been a while, so it's going to be new to a lot of people. But it will make for a great day, so I encourage all of you to put this on your calendars. You're not going out of town, Fourth of July weekend in 2026, you're going to be in town.
And in our parade, hopefully.
And hopefully, in June, and May and June, you'll be helping at a cleanup event, and on the 13th and 14th of June, you'll be helping at the soccer tournament, or at least coming to play with us in the parks. So it is going to be great, but we, if you have suggestions for groups that we can ask to be involved, please let us know. If you have contacts with civic groups, or scout groups, or church groups, or marching bands, or drum lines, or balloon artists, or clowns, there will be all of these things at these events, at the parade and at the city celebration. So it's going to be great.
So questions from Ms. Kane or Ms. Harrison? Well, again, you guys are off to a fabulous start, it's amazing. Thanks to Ms. Kane, Ms. Harrison, thank you to Ms. Meyer and Mr. Pepis, and all the folks from the Chamber of Commerce who are working to bring this thing forward. Again, I would just reiterate and reemphasize what Ms. Kane said, that the Fourth of July Celebration Parade is separate and apart and distinct from, you know, the 250th anniversary of the Republic is something in and of itself to be celebrated, and not to be diluted by FIFA and what the world is going, when the world comes to Kansas City as well. And so, again, there will be crossovers in it, and my thanks to Ms. Harrison for taking the lead on the Fourth of July Parade, as well as to the park staff, who will be doing their normal, exceptional selves with respect to the Fourth of July Celebration. And hopefully, we're going to actually do a little bit more for the Fourth of July Celebration, and that the 250th anniversary is something really to be celebrated. And my wife was fortunate enough to be in Washington DC on the bicentennial, it's hard to believe that was 50 years ago, but again, of equal importance to what happened in 1976. So with that, I appreciate your reports, go forth and continue.
Thank you, and thank you to our staff. Pretty much every department is being plugged in somehow, some way, and so we don't want to overburden our staff, because they have jobs to do, and this is, you know, but we are really trying hard, not only to have it one and done for the FIFA, but to create some of these initiatives that go into the future, their legacy initiatives. It's not a one-and-done, once the games are over, they're over. So we are trying to really make this a comprehensive, inclusive, long-reaching, far-reaching initiative, and it's an honor to be chosen, appreciated, super fun, this is way more fun than some of this stuff. And yay, so thank you to the City of Leewood and our staff and our mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. City Administrator Report. Ms. Dutter, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have two important updates for you this evening, and I've asked Stephen Powell, Assistant City Administrator, to provide those updates for you. I'll turn it over to him.
Mr. Powell, please proceed.
Thank you. Well, the first update is for the new enterprise permitting and licensing system, that we're just about at the very end of implementation. And this, we brought to you a couple times over the last two years, and it's nice to finally almost have it off the ground and ready to go. This new platform is designed to enhance efficiency, collaboration, and communication, and it will be an online portal where businesses can go, apply for permits, submit plans, get business licenses. It's really meant to be kind of a one-stop shop for our business community. Our residents can also use it to apply for animal permits and building permits and whatever else they may need from our planning, permitting, and licensing standpoint. They'll also be able to make payments directly through the portal, and this whole system will tie into our brand-new finance software, so it'll really streamline the financial side of those transactions for us. People can also do online inspection scheduling, so for now, they have to call in or email, and they'll be able to schedule all of those online. And then there's a real-time tracking for applications and inspections, so if someone wants to know what's going on, you know, at a new building site, they can go onto the system and get some of that information at their fingertips. And then it also, adding on to that, it'll increase some transparency for people who are curious about permits and licenses and things like that. And so I need to give a huge shout-out to Travis Torres, because he's been our project manager for this, it's a huge lift, it's involved multiple departments and employees, and Travis has done an outstanding job corralling us all and keeping us on pace to get this to go live. We're very hopeful that it'll be the first week in December is when we'll launch this new system.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Powell? If not, Ms. Dutter, I think you want to talk to us, oh, that's right, Mr. Sipple.
That's all right, no problem. Stephen, will people be able to buy tickets for events through this system?
Not through this system, they can currently do that through RecTrack, which is the Parks and Rec.
Right, and there's been some pushback as to the effectiveness of that system, in terms of how long it takes to get a confirmation or credit card payment and things of that nature. So are you, are you working in that area?
Actually, the Parks Department has started a focus group and a task force to address those issues, separate and apart from what Mr. Powell's doing.
All right, very good, thank you.
And I have two more quick updates related to business licensing and building permits.
All right, Mr. Powell, please continue.
And the second update is the business license fees. So back in April, when we gave our last update on the permitting system, we said we're streamlining our business license process. We currently have over 53 different license categories, and it can be a little confusing for businesses to know which category they fall in. And so we are collapsing those down into 27 categories to make it much more clear when a business licenses, which type of license they need to apply for. And so when we do that, not all of the fees that were related to all those 53 license types are the same. And so what we've done is made some adjustments so that all of our financial institutions, whether you're a bank, a credit union, a mortgage company, any type of financial institution, you're just going to pay a flat fee. And so we've had to make some minor adjustments to our fee schedule to accommodate the new software and this new licensing restructuring. And so those are going to be effective as soon as we go live with the new software. We've already built the software to accommodate those updated fees, and then, and they're attached to this item in your packet. And then when we do our annual fee schedule update, which is probably going to come before you in December, you'll see that we've put those in the official fee schedule to be ratified by you all. And then the last change is Travis is going to need to make some code modifications for five different permit categories related to expiration days for permits. And so that information was included as well in the packet. There are minor, minor changes to make the software more streamlined, and he hopes to bring those back to you before the end of the year, before we go live. And that's my update for the permitting and licensing system.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Questions for Mr. Powell? Ms. Harrison?
The business permits, even a home-based business has to have a permit to do business in the city? Even if it's a small, little, out of the garage? Okay. And that, so that falls under, well...
They would, currently, they license as a home business. And where that gets really confusing is, a lot of times, it's, it's not real clear to the home business what type of business license they should get, because it's just called home business, but it could be an accountant who works from home, or it could be a daycareer, that, so rather than having a home business category, we're just going to have them licensed as the business type that they are, and pay that fee, and then there will be a box they check on their application that says they are home-based. And that way, when they come through the system, we can make sure that their business type is in conformance with the LDO related to home occupations. It'll allow us to better track what type of businesses are going on at a residential property.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Other questions or comments for Mr. Powell? If not now, I believe that Ms. Dutter may wish to bring us up to date on progress with respect to the strategic plan.
And Mayor, I also ask, if Stephen would have this up, Stephen's done a great job of coordinating with our staff and all the updates, so I asked him if he would provide this brief update, and then, of course, the rest of our staff members who have provided the updates for Stephen's report are here to answer any questions that you have this evening.
So Mr. Powell, I would note, for everyone, I think you've noticed that the strategic plan initiative is long and has numerous steps to it and numerous goals. Mr. Powell, I would encourage you to be brief.
I will be brief. So this was a work across all of our departments to provide this first quarterly update, we will be doing these on a quarterly basis, and this is the last time you're going to see a 36-page report, because Jill Parsons, our intern, and I are just about ready to implement our new tracking software, and so going forward, this will be a dashboard on our city website, where anybody can drill down into the strategic plan, it'll help us stay accountable to the goals that you all approved in the strategic plan, and then we will have a custom report that we will present to you quarterly, that will have a lot more detail on the metrics and how we're tracking different things. So for this first report, it is long and very wordy, and we'll use this as training for the next report, when we start inputting some of this data into this new software system. But if you have any questions about any specifics, I'm happy to answer them, but I won't go through the whole report.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Yes, Ms. Phil.
This is in question so much, because I did read, I read through it, and I was just gobsmacked, it was so good. So I'm seriously so impressed with all the work that you guys have put into it, it's a great document. I really especially wanted to call the boards and committee work that you're doing, the recruiting online, tracking that, where are they coming, how are they finding out about it, and doing, creating an on- and off-boarding program for our volunteers to come on to a committee, and then how do they have a life cycle, and the replacements come in. I was excited about the Monarch Gateway and Pollinator Garden piece, that's fun, and I had a question about FCIP LED lights, and that might be for David to answer, but are we, are we going to have a standard for the new lighting as we go to LED? Because I noticed on Mission, we have like three different colors, you know, we have the blue, the yellow, the white, and I was wondering how that, it's a small detail, but you don't even know who to ask that of, right? Who's in charge of the light colors?
And Mr. Lay is on his way forward, because he is the light man.
You can go, you think that's a Halloween costume idea for you, you could be the light man.
So for the LED lighting, what we plan on doing is to set up two cul-de-sacs, one up north, one down south, with what we are proposing, and then send out some information out to the public, and have them go out and look at it and provide feedback. Currently, we have about, I think it's around 1,000, a little bit more than 1,000 LED lights that are the 4,000 Kelvin, which is more of the wider light. So the thought is, instead of having to replace those to match the new ones, that we were proposing to use the same color.
And the new ones is just our choice, right? But like on Mission, it seems like there's three different colors there, is that true?
Well, there's a purple, which isn't supposed to be out there, that we're trying to get that fixed. But, yeah, I think Prairie Village is a different color, but for the most part, OP and Leewood are the 4,000 Kelvin on the arterials, and Leewood is also 4,000 Kelvin in the residential areas on the ones that we've done. So we are proposing to use that same color, but we do want to outfit a few, a couple streets to get the public's feedback on that.
And that will take place in what timeframe?
We're still picking out the fixture, we're trying to find one that's a reasonable cost and one that doesn't go purple on us, and so we're probably going to do that early next, late this year, early next year.
Okay, thanks.
So ultimately, the goal is to have all the streetlights the same color, the light coming for the streetlights to be the same color.
And that's how we currently have it set up, but we'll hear the feedback, and then we'll come back to you if it's going to change.
And also, the impact, you know, like if you go to certain places where they have low lighting requirements, are we cognizant of how we minimize light pollution for bats and other things that are flying around?
So with the LEDs, these have a pretty tight pattern, so they're an oval pattern, so we're switching to a Type III, is a kind of a wider oval pattern, to where the Type II fixtures that we're looking at is a more narrow, longer pattern, so it doesn't light the houses or the yards as much, and it's more focused on the roadway. Part of the issue with up north is, without having sidewalks on most of the residential streets, if we don't have a lot of light on the roadway, then you have a lot of pedestrians out there who, you know, it's tough to see visibility at night with vehicles, and so that's one thing that we're concerned about. And so that's why we're thinking about using the brighter, the Type II light, and not actually dimming the levels, having it at the, you know, similar levels that we currently require.
Well, thanks for gathering feedback, it'll be helpful.
Other questions for Mr. Lay, Ms. Harrison?
Ms. Phil opened the door, she talked about light pollution, and, you know, we all became bird watchers during COVID, we couldn't help it, but we did, and now I'm aware of migratory problems and the light pollution. Is there a way, I appreciate the light at 8:00, and 9:00, and 10:00 at night, but I don't know if you know this, Leewood gets really quiet around 10:30, there's just really not a lot of drivers out there. Would it be possible, in this system of lights that you're, that we have, for the lights to dim a smidge at 11:00 or 1:00 in the morning? I mean, I know we want them for crime prevention, we want, but even a 20% less light, safety wouldn't be an issue, or is that, is that a pipe dream that...
So that's, it would be easier to do if all our lights were controller-fed, but about more than, more than half of them are direct-fed by EverGee, so we don't have controls to them, so we'd have to use a smart light system, they would just cost quite a bit more in order to communicate to all those lights to have them dim at a certain time.
In a perfect world, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Anything else for Mr. Lay? Thank you, Mr. Lay. Anything else for Mr. Powell vis-à-vis the strategic plan? Well, again, thanks, Mr. Powell, as you know, I spent a fair amount of time reading through those 36 pages, and they were definitely comprehensive, and it is, I would agree with Ms. Phil, a tremendous amount of work that you've shown, the staff has shown just in the first quarter of the implementation of this three-to-five-year strategic plan. So we look forward to a different way of presenting the progress, maybe something that's a little bit more visual and less narrative, which will be really appreciated, I think. I don't believe we have any committee recommendations this evening, nor have we old business or new business. I note that we have a series of upcoming meetings, and I would note, with some sadness, that we have now added another, pardon me, item on to our calendar, and that is, on Tuesday, December 2nd, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, we will be hosting a retirement reception for two of our outgoing elected officials, Mr. Sipple and Ms. Phil, and that will be an opportunity for us to recognize their decades of service to the city and the tremendous impact they've had on the city. So we look forward to that, kind of with mixed emotions. Is there anything else to come before the governing body this evening? Ms. Dutter, do you have anything else?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Thank you, Ms. Phil. Thank you, Mr. Sipple. We'll get your motions and seconds in a lot here, a lot here, lots of meetings. All those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it, and the meeting is adjourned. Look forward to seeing you all on November the 3rd.